All right, the next, first one on the agenda is Jared. If we look at the first two pages.
I'm sorry.
Whatever Jared's paying, that's him.
Yeah. I felt like I was in grade school again.
Oh, Florida.
Yeah.
Mic star.
Yeah. We'll bring it up loud.
Man, rough start. Rough start. Okay.
We can hear you.
You got the little graphic thing? Okay. Not too flashy and removed from the intensive planning for the past couple of years, more intensely than the past six months, but actually getting pretty excited here. We've got, the only substantial changes are each light will have a photometric cell. So as it's tied into the meters, this will ensure that, you know, they come on individually at the exact same time and not dependent upon the traffic lights. So that's an upgrade. Some of the final plans for the CMAC funds, which is the $3 million coming out to bid next year, that's, CMAC is the Pendock project that we've been working very closely with, with the crosswalks and traffic lights. Their final plan showed that the traffic lights no longer go diagonally across intersections, right? So if you look over by the medicine shop right now, there's one traffic light that's going diagonal and there is a couple of lights on both sides. What's new, Pendock's end, separate from us, is some of those intersections now have two light apparatuses, right? So they'll have a traffic pole that goes up and sticks over like the number seven, and then another one, right? So a lot of the intersections are having those. How does that impact our project is obviously some of those sections, we can't put lights anymore. So what is going to happen is a decorative light fixture, the head, is going to be put on to the traffic light of the exact same model and color as our individual streetlights. So it'll be nice and completely match. Also, we've matched the, sort of, the exact pigment and color of the powder coated our lights with their lights. So the streetlights won't be just like, you know, say glossy and ours will be matte, will be the exact same shade of black, so they'll work like in the same family. Yeah, so the, this map here has, I think we're at 55 on this phase. So they're on track to be delivered this July, which is next month, at the end of the month. We have a secure location that they're going to be delivered to and then immediately after they'll start to be installed. We're really fortunate to have the expertise and the engineering team of Schulteis Electric. This has not been an easy project, it's been very complicated, but Wayne and I worked a lot together. Sorry about that Wayne, you've got to use up my email there. And the lighting company is top of the line as well and that's made it, you know, some of these challenges a lot more manageable. The other page, I don't know if you print out both Wayne and me. Yeah, so the spec light, it's the same one I think I brought to here about two years ago. We're at 16 and 7 inches to the photometric center, which is where the light bulb, or the LED light is. It's at 17 and 3 inches to ensure that someone can't jump up and smack the banner. There you go. So that's, the city code is at 10 feet. So we had to make sure, we had to sort of pump it up just a little bit, so it's still really appropriate size for an urban setting in our photometric. Light standards exceed that, which Pendock needs for safety. So it would be a better lift downtown and I think the banner should have 2 feet wide and 3 and 1/2 feet tall. So it's sort of a modified, a personal word for it, let graphics drive more of that since they're not going to be gigantic, they're going to be, you know, sized. Yeah, that's a development. I'm visiting the facility this Friday on the Eastern Friday stage to see how the production's going and we're on track, so it's exciting.
You're up to 55 lights now?
55.
That, what was the original score of lights worth as you was planning on?
We had around, well, it was between 53 to 63. The initial, the initial plan that Pendock had, had seemed, like I said, had single post traffic apparatuses, right? So we were already exceeding the amount of light in those corners, so some of them are split. So there's about 7 or 8 intersections where they're now putting two of those in, right? So they're going to be, maybe you can't physically put a light over top of a traffic light, but what's going to happen is they're going to strap a head to, I want to say head, like a mast arm that goes out about 6 inches and just the head of this will be coming out of the pole or at the same height as the current streetlights. So it'll be consistent versus a really big cobra head, which is, right now, we have that at, what's called the dance line, WCCC corner. So those both, that's the widest intersection downtown.
Do you have enough money to cover all this, right?
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple, there's, you know, a couple thousand dollars that were added with, you know, the underground utility issues that were occurring and the need for photometric individual cells, but yeah, we're on track now. Modification to 55, that's a lot of that.
I think two things, you know, I want council to be aware of is, and Jared and I talked about it, there's going to be, like for, for Scotty Jeeves, there's going to be a couple of cobras, the older style until Phase Two, because of the fact that it's overhead wire and it would cost too much at this point in time to change it. So there'll be, you know, you'll see like the decorative lights and then you may see a block, a block of the cobra lights. Just so you're aware of that, because I don't want to make you surprised, you know, when you go on down and see that. That's really an economic thing. You know, the other thing is we still need to talk to West Penn a little bit about, because of the way the lines are laid out, we're going to end up having some of their cobra lights become our lights. In other words, we're taking over a string of lights. Well, on a string of lights, you'd have six decorative poles and two cobra lights on the end. Because of the money and because of the fact that at this point in time, it's going to be a Phase Two change. So we still got to talk to West Penn and mark that perimeter up because basically it's their poles and they have to, you know, bless us. We'll have to see what the, how much of blessing costs, you know, so. But I mean, it's doable, it's just I want, I want everybody to understand that there is that two items. The rest, I mean, you know, there's been a lot of time and effort put into this and it's going to make the downtown look very decorative, it's just the fact that people lost some sections that ended up being cobra still because of economics.
Yeah, but the, when, over, when, I don't know if it's errors before my time, you know, things get damaged, you know, a decade ago, 20 years ago, whenever, at some point in some of those areas, you'll see it by the bridge, they're strung through the air. And West Penn has been reiterating they're going to come test those areas out to determine, you know, where those errors occurred and, you know, where that lights are fixed, but that's beyond our pay grade right now. We think this main section, all, there's none of those areas up Main and Depot and that's nice and the majority of Leaning Street and the library on down to the railroad tracks is looking clean on the bright side. So some of those areas, if you just go up there, you'll see, you know, it's sort of by Scotty Jeeves, Two Trailings, there's like a line there.
Is there a plan B for the future to develop these other areas in the downtown, Jared?
Oh yeah, I mean, I love that.
Well, I mean, I was, what I mean is, has there been consideration given to say, okay, we ultimately want to go out to Spring or out to Chestnut or something?
Yeah, yeah.
New Allegheny or Algen.
So, yeah, that's a good question. So during the urban renewal, I think the late 70s, all the down, there's about 100 roughly lights where they carry the utility lines. So what we would envision is, to your point, the Phase Two where the walking trail, maybe, you know, it could, it could got its own meter, so there's about 10 lights there from the bridge going that way. The cross-sections of 12 and then Spring seem to make sense in front of City Hall going down to about the ice cream store, Valley Dairy. And then those few little nuances on Leaning Street that would essentially cover the entire downtown. So all those that happened during the urban renewal, which are basically cobra heads that are not strapped onto wooden poles, like, you know, so the user wants it, have not been switched out to LEDs, I think West Penn had now has hit about 500 some lights have been switched out from the neighborhoods.
Yeah, those lights won't be switched out on the LEDs, they're going to be under the agreement contract so that when the money's available for Phase Two, we don't have to buy the contract back out. So in other words, there's going to be, could be 500 some lights are going to be LEDs under a new agreement with West Penn here. 55 or whatever is going to be the decorative pole, those remaining, whatever they're the, I don't know, 40, 30, 40 lights will still be West Penn's, but they'll be under the old contract until the money's a little taken off. Because if we haven't changed the LED, it's now we're going to, we're in a 20-year contract. So you don't want to get in that. So, I mean, that's what's, it's got to be, there's a lot of iterations in there, it's not, it's not a simple, you know, just change it over and we move on type of thing, but you know, I think the plan's in place to take the, the steps.
How much money's needed for Phase Two?
Well, the, what do we have, this is about plus 300,000, around there for 280. And that gives us 60 lights, but that also builds in 12 meters, right? So all the heavy lifting's pretty much done. So it wouldn't be a fair equation to do that ratio and say, well, you know, at 55 lights, it was 300, you know, 290,000, at 45, it'll actually be a ratio less than that. So it's around, I'm probably, it's, you know, it's around 4,500 to 5,000 per light, right? That includes those other elements of 40 meters, but some of those lights we have to switch out, we'll have a meter installed already, right? So it won't cost as much for Phase Two, is basically what I'm saying. So I would, I would say, if you want to do the whole thing as seen on the map that Kim Kelly had alluded to, maybe with 55 now, there's about 40 more lights, 45 lights roughly, I would say that's around, you know, 200,000.
Yeah, you probably could add even the 4,000 if you're talking like 2,000.
Yeah, because Multimodal just came up again, it's got that email today, CD, so. And I know we tried before, but it didn't happen with the generosity of you all and Captain Mitzvah Ken stepped up to make this happen and other community players up at the Rogers, but, you know, they like the fact of the, the new application coming in that we already showed that we have this first phase in, we have the ability to create that match, so that's working in our favor as well, so.
Yeah, it may be like with, with the street signs where once people saw one, then you started selling, selling the road. You know, so once you see these lights, then people start saying, hey, you know, what will it take to finish the project? So, help with that a little bit. Any questions for Mr. Jared? All right, we'll move on then.
I just have a general question, if anything is required of council to move forward?
Nothing, as the council approved, you know, the project before, we're in a, like so we still have some particular to work out with West Penn, but barring any major issues with West Penn, we should, you know, get going. When the council gets this approval, is something significant in along with those, I don't know.
If you guys have any more questions, just shoot me an email, call me, you know, I'd be the deal, whatever.
Thank you.
Next is Enviro 21.
Good evening, thank you for taking the time to listen about our company. I've had the opportunity to talk with Wayne on a couple of occasions. Enviro 21 is a new, new substance product for municipalities starting in this area. We launched about a year ago. It's an online reverse auction portal for the waste industry.
Excuse me, sir, can I have your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is John Frissell.
Okay.
I apologize.
It's all right.
But what happened, Enviro 21, I've been in the waste industry since 1990. I've done three super funds cleanups, 20-plus Army Corps of Engineer projects, and I've worked with 20-plus Fortune 500 companies. And they would send me bids and I would send a number out and that was that. I kept thinking there has to be a better way, there has to be a way to bring this into the 21st century and that's how Enviro 21 came up. What we do now is, let's say for example, Latrobe has a bid for their waste with the landfills, because you have your own site here. So the landfills, we would go out, I would work with the solicitor and/or the engineer for the, for the city of Latrobe, and we would instruct the bid such that we would put in the opening bid price. Now what that does, that forces the price down immediately, okay? And then we would stay in a reverse auction format where people can keep bidding down on the price. Let me give you two examples. The Borough Brankin for their trash pickup, they only have 731 residences. They were paying $117,000 a year and Waste Management had the contracts. We started bidding at 120,000, the Waste Management had to absorb part of, we ended up getting it for $116,000 on a fixed contract for five years. Waste Management had already told them that they were going up 6.5% the next year, so they were going to be at 124,000, 125,000. We got them down to 116 for the Borough and that includes my fees. So we saved them considerable money and that's a fixed rate for five years. The city of McKeesport signed up with us, we did a bid last month for them to demolish 97 houses. They were paying between 9 and 10,000 dollars a house for demolition. So 97 houses, what's that come to? Close to a million dollars. We ended up getting the price down to 711,500 dollars with the same vendors that were bidding on all their other projects. They were so excited that we have another bid for 99 houses in McKeesport that is going to be handled on this Friday. And by the way, the vendors, the demolition contractors liked it so much that the people that bid on the last one both said, they're coming, they're bidding again. And we have two more people starting to bid on this because they said, you're getting rid of all the bad people. In other words, we vet everybody that bids. If we don't think somebody's qualified, we go to your, to you guys because it's your bid, you have the right to say yea or nay. And we come to you and say, this fellow doesn't have the bond that you need, or this fellow has too many notices of violations against them. That's a decision you, you people have to make, but we make our recommendation. We assist with the bid process. For example, in Rankin Borough, first thing I put on the bid is this bid must be inclusive of all taxes, fees, and surcharges. We eliminated the fuel surcharge, which is how the, the different people are really jacking the price up. And then we started at a lower price. So we got that pushed down with McKeesport. Mayor Chirupko from McKeesport was so excited, he had said last time, we had based our opening price, instead of on 9 to 10,000 a house, we based our opening price on 8 to 9, or 8,000 a house, I'm sorry, not 8 to 9, on 8,000 a house, and we got it down, it ended up at 7,300 a house, and that included the asbestos inspection that's required in Allegheny County. What happened then, Mayor Chirupko for this round, we're starting at 7,500 this time. And I says, Mayor, I says, you know, it's getting a little aggressive there, bro. He said, that's all right, we can always rebid. We don't get any bidders at this price, we can rebid it. And I already know of three people, I know four bidders and I know three people that I've told them what the opening price is, and they said, that's fine, we're bidding. So we know we're going to get a lower price again. That's Enviro 21. We also handled, by the way, we're now starting with paving projects, we can also do procurement of light bulbs, we could do salt for your roads, we could do anything, we do it in a, again, reverse auction format. The other thing is, we have researchers and people, including myself, that we stay up on the current things that are happening in the environmental industry with new policies, new practices, new technologies that we can acquaint you with. And if we think something's appropriate, we're going to tell you, we think it's appropriate. Again, the decision is yours. We charge, by the way, so you're aware, $295 a year for a subscription to our service. I've given Mr. Jones the, the contract and stuff to review with the solicitor and whatever, if interested. But then we take between 3% and 10% from the auction, any auction we do. If the auction is over $250,000, we take 3%. Now, a broker, and I was a broker for 20 some years with my own companies, we charge between 15 and I've charged as high as 50%, and I'm still one of the better price brokers going. So this is major price savings. Now, one of the ways we've gotten into a lot of communities and a lot of the municipalities around is because I retained the services of Regola Consulting. Bob Regola was state senator here in Pennsylvania, he has set up a consulting practice, he knows a number of, most of the politicians in the state and a number of them in the federal government, and he's been assisting various municipalities with receiving grants, finding out about programs like mine and so forth. Bob has been working with me for four years now while we've developed this program. And I brought him along because he's going to talk to you for a few moments about what he can offer you guys and about grants and so forth with your program. By the way, anybody has any questions? I left some of my business cards here and I think Wayne said that he gave out the little flyer on our business. Please feel free to contact me, love to do business with you.
Thank you. Paul?
Good evening, everyone. Chip kind of introduced me, as he mentioned, I'm Bob Regola. I have my own consulting firm, basically. I stay focused on three specific areas. We can do anything from A to Z, however, my main three topic areas are business development, government affairs, and grants. With regards to Enviro 21, I was originally hired to do government affairs, making sure everything was in right order, moving it through the Commonwealth. Well, that transitioned into ultimately introductions on both the local and county and state level, so you start dealing with the business development and, and then ultimately also, as a startup company, led to what opportunities there may or may not be with grants. Now, when you're dealing with municipality, I represent a handful of municipalities. Basically, we're looking at the government affairs side, what can be harmful or helpful to a municipality, help be your advocate to, if there's any legislation that may or may hurt the municipality, or, the main area is grants, so the previous presenter touched basically, had mentioned about some urban grants. But everybody's aware, the state budget was just passed on Friday night, so basically from this point forward, you're going to be looking at major funds of money. It's an election year, so there's going to be a lot of different opportunities with DCNR grants, which is your recreation, your DCD, your RLE, Greenlight Go, there's multiple areas where there's going to be grant money. The way that it works best, in my experience, I can sit down, I can write grants, but really, you're paying me for a service that most engineering firms or the solicitor, or you have an in-house who will prepare the grant. I'll help get some key words in there, review it, get it in front of the key people. My main job is really to elevate your grant application. There's thousands of grants that are submitted, there's limited number of monies, so my main goal is to get your application elevated. Above and beyond that, you also want to make sure you set up key meetings and get the local buy-ins, because a lot of the local agents, their representatives are actually helping grade these grants. So if you get their buy-in on these applications, they're also an endorsement for you. We bring these agents out, set up key meetings, whether you have a specified person or people delegated to meeting with that, along with your manager, engineer, we set those up, conduct it, get their buy-in, and then once the application is submitted, then I try to set up further meetings in Harrisburg and try, find ways to help advocate your, be your advocate, elevate your application, get you a better chance of receiving the grant money. But it's, it's quite a process, I would be an extension of your team. I'm trying to do this as quick as possible and try to explain it, so are there any questions? I don't want to really just...
I have two questions, Paul. How do you charge, I think we know percentage, I don't know, like you just...
Well, basically, the, the way we're supposed to do it, and with all the new lobbying compliance rules, which I was part of implementing, some of those, and they really just went a step higher, the cleanest way to do this is keep the percentages out of it. You basically set up a straight monthly retainer with the municipality. Everything's clear, I have an attorney on staff, as a matter of fact, he's on Harrisburg. He in turn will file all the quarterly reports, he'll do all the compliance reporting, so there's two types of consulting slash lobbying. If I were retained, I would register myself, my company, and Latrobe. I will pay the, the fee, the fee is for a two-year fee, it's a one-time, two-year fee for the session, so it'll be a $300 fee, I would pay 600, the municipality would pay 300. We're required to submit quarterly reports, my attorney Scott would submit the quarterly reports on behalf of the municipality, on behalf of Bob and on behalf of my company, and that keeps that conduit, so if there's ever a question with regards to anything, he does that. Above and beyond that, then we, we agree upon a monthly retainer based off the services that we would be pursuing. You know, some municipalities want me strictly to focus on a corridor project, some want me to look at everything from A to Z. Is there money for sanctuary resort projects? Is there money for parks and recreation, you name it? So we basically structure it. But I realize most municipalities are on a fixed budget, being a former local supervisor, so I try to base the fees accordingly. Some of the higher, larger municipalities pay a larger fee than smaller municipalities. Currently, I represent in Westmoreland County, Swigley Township, Patton Township, and Mount Pleasant Borough.
And I understand that, say sewage project, I'm not quite sure what it was, that was pretty much a result of the grant, project going up Main Street, Mount Pleasant, yeah?
Yes, that was quite unique. With Mount Pleasant, they hired me immediately when I got in business and I utilized my background in surveying engineering. So we looked at the entire corridor and we got all the agencies together with all the utility companies, got their buy-in on the project, then we also ultimately got Pendock's buy-in, and then I went a step further and got the federal buy-in. So what you see now is the improvements in underground infrastructure, you're seeing the actual pavement. They wanted to take it a step further with regards to the green infrastructure, so they roughly needed a half a million dollars, so I was able to get 350,000, knowing the caps that most, you know, what the government, Harrisburg was willing to give, so we got 350 from the state and then we got a matching grant from the federal government of 350 to do the green outside of the curves to do it.
One of the things we've heard in the past is, gee, there are grants out there and so-and-so got one or so-and-so got one, why can't we? Didn't we know about it? And I guess my biggest concern would be, can your company work with the city to help identify the kinds of grants that are out there, whether it would be for sewage or roads or a building or parking record?
Yes, that's one of my...
So we know what's out there.
Yes, that's one of my roles. And really, the way this works, we all have to be on the same page. So I challenge the municipality more than they challenge me, what is your short-term, one-year term, vision, three-year, five-year? Knowing that if you want to pursue recreation, we look at what's available. So I'm going to challenge you, okay, you want to look at recreation, what type of a project? Do you have a schematic? For example, Swigley Township roughly, just, they're looking at some recreation, so they did a rough rep plan. And I, that I'll take that sketch to Harrisburg and say, okay, we want to put a walking trail here, we may want to do this, what type of funding, then we get back with their engineering. Yes, so you have to help identify those for you, work hand-in-hand with your solicitor, your engineer, and whoever that delegated or delegated people are for that committee, council. The only way this works, we all work together. The only way this works, we all work together.
Well, I think you would want to know what are our needs?
I would want to know-
If it's separating sewers, that's one of our needs. If it's construction, roadways, that's one of our needs.
Right, if you're looking at traffic and light improvements, that's one of your needs. And there's, you know, for example, the Arley that was mentioned. There's two funding pockets for that. A lot of people just automatically go to Pendog. There's another opportunity with the DCD. So it's smart to submit both applications. There's ways to do it, but really, you need to have the vision. I don't know, I'll never know your municipality as good as you would. But that's pretty much the process. I've also, municipality just contacted me up in Butler area where they can't figure out why they've been submitting stuff for 20 years and are good projects and they never receive them. So there's a discussion, well, you need someone. It's one thing to write a paper and submit it. Even if it's an A-plus paper, you need someone to set up key meetings and get their buy-in on your behalf. And then you'd also want the senator and the state rep, the county commissioners. That's another area, you know, I was talking most of the state. You know, there's opportunities in the county with the CDPGs, getting them involved on different avenues.
Mr. Purcell, with all due respect, this is what I was hoping, was Mr. Regola's presentation. Not that there is anything wrong with what you said, but I'm going to ask the question. Are you two separate entities?
Yeah, yes.
We want grant writing, grant writing only? We could deal either of them?
You don't need me, no, basically, Enviro 21, he brought, I, he was one of my clients.
I retained Bob's services.
So basically, my main goal now is to get, set up key meetings in front of municipalities. Now, Chip actually set this meeting up directly, but there's a lot of times we'll set up meetings-
Jointly.
Jointly, like this. My goal is to, when, if I set up a meeting in Harrisburg, my goal is hopefully already you have an endorsement. But Chip and I are separate.
Yeah.
And I'll shut up after this. If requested by council, could you submit a proposal?
I would submit a proposal.
That would outline fees, charge, services rendered relating to grants and seeking the grants.
Right, the question I would have for council, when you submit grants, who submits them? Who prepares them?
Normally, they're done in-house. You know, but again, we would want to narrow the scope because, you know, we have a separate water and sewage authority. We don't really have a need for certain types of grants to go after. You know, parking wreck has a separate operation. They may want to buy in and help you separate. So there's some things we could narrow down the scope, which would help narrow down the burden.
Exactly, and I think the way this works the best and to keep it most feasible for the municipality, if you, they're in-house and prepare the actual grants. If I don't prepare the grant, I will review it, but I'm, to be very honest, I'm not doing a good service for you at that point because I'm sitting behind my desk writing grants. I would, so therefore, I'm going to hire someone to write the grant. But then you're going to absorb that fee.
Right, no, like I said, all of our grants are written in-house. So, you know, that's something we can provide to Bob and have Bob review and help push forward. Same thing, we do the same thing with Traka, because Traka helps push also.
I would be meeting with Joe, you know, getting his endorsement. But your grants, as prepared, I would review, critique them. I would also try to get it in front of some others to, as a slogan. But even before we prepare a grant, let's identify the project and let's see what our chances are.
If it's needing, and we would want to use, let's say, on an independent contractor basis, someone write grants, you provide referrals and do-
I actually work with some people, yes, I could do that.
I'm not saying we would, I'm saying if that was-
I can do that, yes. And you have to look at this two ways. The new budget starts July 1st, so we're, and everything's getting teed up. So a lot of municipalities will look at it, well, boy, we don't need to retain someone like myself until January. Where others look at it, well, you have to really start moving forward because you have to realize there is going to be a round of applications being a little election year that's going to get in the fall. And sometimes your first, the previous speaker, not Chip, but the previous gentleman mentioned about how they already have one submitted. And you know, once you do get an approval, it's sometimes a lot easier. That's the case with submitting a grant. You may not get the actual, get the home run the first time, but that application's in there and you continue to have pages, there's a chance to about the second time.
So Mr. Regola, if you are representing multiple cities and we're all going after the same money, how do you differentiate which one you're going to push and which one I'm not? Like, how do you balance that out?
Really, right now, it's, I really push for everyone, you get their buy-in. It's very sad that it's a project that includes, and there's enough funding. What's really sad is there's a lot of really good submissions. Sometimes your submission's not really what wins, and it's just a matter of having someone elevate it. So I try to be that person to set up those key meetings for you. And it's probably going to be, very unlikely your project's going to be identical to someone else's.
So if you have the time, I guess, in front of, like, say Joe of Traka, how do you determine who you're going to present first? So you have four municipalities and you've got four different projects. I guess that's my thing.
Well, currently, none of my municipalities are represented by Representative Traka.
Well, obviously, she doesn't have, for example, but let's say all four of them are. How do you decide?
I would actually explain all of those. But now, however, I would call a meeting with Representative Traka to Latrobe. This is our project. I would ask for that letter of endorsement, you know, and ask him to advocate on your behalf.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving forward. Number three on the hit parade is for the next meeting. I'm awarding the bid a little bit for the E and R industry to City, the E and R industry. They came in around, you can see my quarter of my dollars, which was significantly lower than the others. Number, the next one, the big question is, stop it, is replacing everything with ductwork and the voiders. You know, curb stats, heating and chiller and all that stuff. Everything that's seen its better days. And the money would come from the reserve. We have a 101 sitting in capital reserve. It's all budget items on the capital reserve.
Wayne, do we have any-
I've got all my budget of quarter million dollars.
Do we have any knowledge about their repair service once a product is purchased through, through this company?
I've dealt with City before. They have, they're a large company. They're, they're a very good reputation. And I've dealt with them in the past, you know, they're a part throughout the area. A member of community ownership. I think St. Vincent uses them too.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're a big company. They have, we haven't resolved the final number for maintenance agreement. They had a maintenance agreement. They were at seven thousand dollars for the year or something like that. And that was maintaining the old system. So we're still negotiating. I'm not, I'm not going to pay that much money. You know, they didn't need to pay that much for a brand. It says, we're still talking about the negotiating. All right, next is the roof replacement, the two, it's called Agood Roof LLC. They, again, we have three bids, they were the lowest bidder. They're all, they're all within, you know, within six thousand. They, this is going to be, what would you call it? Most material we can put on there?
Hi, it's a polymeride, it's an epoxy.
Epoxy.
It's a membrane.
My brain went down with epoxy.
I think that was the name of the epoxy, but we're just-
Yeah, yeah. Basically, they're going to clean the stone off, put epoxy down, and essentially seal it.
That's for the whole roof?
That's for the whole roof. And I'll do the, we're trying to be, down with the chiller, he's going to do that after they're done with the work. And that would have then walk my brain to the roof.
How about the repair grant that we have repaired still?
I'm going to leave that alone. We fixed it, yeah, that's, that's pretty good. Yeah, it doesn't mean it's only like you're holding up. They'll come in and, you know, I think you said they'd do something with it. Was he going to put a sealer over it or something?
You mean it?
The roof repaired down here?
Yeah, yeah, it would be the same thing. It would be, you know, since there's no, actually, that would be all removed.
Oh, it wasn't removed?
Yeah.
All it was, okay.
Yeah, that's a complete removal, because actually, there's stone underneath that still. So that's, stone needs to go.
Right, obviously, he wasn't doing any of this. That's all, that's inclusive, the entire building.
When they submit their bids, do they show you examples of other places they've done?
Yeah, so he also shows us the example material we used. I mean, you know, we did, as a matter of fact, we kind of forestalled awarding it because we want to check on it. And the company, I think the company has what, it's a 20-year guarantee?
Yeah, it's a 20-year guarantee. Each level of epoxy, I think, is 10 millimeters, 10 millimeters, I think lasts 10 years. It's impenetrable to UV rays, what breaks down a roof to begin with. Has a 20-year guarantee against standing water on the roof because any type of water that lays on a roof acts as a magnifying glass, technically. So you get the sun's rays intensifying through the water, which then will help, will break down any material. This type of epoxy, each layer gives a 10-year warranty. And since it's going to be a double layer, it's a 20-year warranty with that. It also has a lot of perks too. It reflect the sun's rays, it'll also reduce energy, you know, costs. Instead of having a black roof where it's going to attract sunlight, this is going to reflect it. So in the summertime, we're going to reduce some energy costs with having a roof like that, so.
Where are these guys from?
He's from Champion, yeah, Champion up by Seven Springs.
Yeah, the company's out of Texas?
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, I think it's-
Yeah, they're, they're coming, the bank company's on that. All right, next on here is selection of banners. And you'll see, what I'm asking, banners, you know, last game. And you'll see, did I number them? One through seven? Let me explain seven. Seven is, if you guys select communities, they're doing like local veterans. What happens is a local veteran, the family of a local veteran, this picture, they would buy. And at the end of the year, it would go to them. So what I was going to do, ask is to select six out of the seven. And then, you know, let me know and email your selections, like, one, three, five, whatever it is. I'll code it and we'll go forward. I'm going to do 60 banners, 10 each. And allow 10 families to have their family number represented. And next year, you get 10 different family numbers.
So basically, eliminate one?
Yes, eliminate one. And we have, you know, like, saw this in the first page, is the, we normally have, and the mass footage, they have a better picture, don't look at that. That was the original picture, we have a better picture for that. But, you know, with the arms, you know, and, you know, the veterans, you know. Then we went into the industry, air mail pickup and the railroad. The railroad is part of the, you know, what created the trail. Anyway, you don't have to eliminate, you can just let me know. I see Jerry already marking it. That way, I'll just go down with that.
All right. Do you want to let you know, I'll eliminate one, if you want to let you know.
Well, in fact, you're not supposed to vote.
I'm not voting.
You have to eliminate it as well.
I'm just saying, here's what I eliminate, if everyone else says that they're all done with it. Why are we not voting on it?
What's that? Well, it sucks, I'm already doing 60, 10 each. I just figured, Wayne, you'd rather them. We could do, we could do small seven. We just have to, you know. And we're doing 60, so we have to eliminate the-
How much is it for banner?
You know what, I'm trying to think what the banners cost.
Seriously?
And do you remember what the banners cost? They weren't that expensive.
It's like 3,000 dollars maybe? Daycom?
Urban?
They were bigger though, those were five foot, five by two.
Yeah, we made the shorter ones and spoke to them, they were like 60, so I can say 80 dollars.
Okay, so we're talking 800 dollar or more, we just said do all seven?
Yeah.
Do we have a place to put all seven?
No, that's, we're going to run out of poles.
So really, six is about the max we could do?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's why we went with 60. We actually used to buy 50, but we've gotten away from poles. We have debris, we can actually pull out banners along with the grid before.
Players go at the local, uh, town.
Yeah, and that's what does it, a number of places do it. Yeah, everyone has, everyone has a big issue with it. You know, that's why I was saying at the end of the year, giving it back to the family. That way, you know, the family can handle it. It's something for them to, it's not anymore my use. Well, next year, we get 10 more. Yeah, I don't think after, because of the idea, I think you'll have people in line. All right, so just shoot me an email letting you know which number you don't want to use. And I'll send you the 60.
Bring it to the next meeting, so here's what it is. If you want to change it, then you can change it.
You can get, that's fine, I don't care how we do it. I'm trying to make it very easy. We're not going to order them right now, anyway. And I can actually get, I can contact them and get a better price. I probably forgot how much it was, you know, exactly.
Well, it sounds like we can't add anymore, and those people are tense.
No, I mean, and again, I like the idea with the veterans because I think that gives our veteran, our residents something to remind. All right, next one I've shown is, we were talking about the blinking lights last week. The blinking light.
Blinky light.
Blinky.
I'm saying the blinking.
Blinky.
I don't know if it's all blinky, but I don't know. You can see the picture of the old, picture of current. And this is a suggestion as a replacement for, basically, you're going to, a light that's similar to the railroad. And again, a suggestion to put on this in replacement of the, oh, they like to have on an outside.
And could we consider removing that granite or that, whatever it is, and then putting a pole? Just a black pole with that lighter?
Well, we can, we can have a, we can have a, I wouldn't remove it. The cement is, you know, pretty big.
I won't shoot it there. It's still there.
Yeah, it's, that's, that thing's been hit so many times, it hasn't moved.
Because I'm putting some of the two more.
Yeah, I guess that's if it's being hit.
It's been bitten, you know?
Yeah.
Well, it's actually, it's insane, they would be going all directions. But it's, apparently, they're pretty well. But to your point, Jim, if you see what that gray concrete is on that curb? The gray curb, the gray cement block area?
Yeah, the ovalist or whatever.
You can take that off and you could put a pole up there from that.
Oh, just the tall grave?
Yeah.
Keep the small and down below?
Yeah, I mean, you could do to put a, you know, 18-inch pole and then put the light on that. I'm just thinking, you know, I've talked to a big gentleman a little time, but, you know, we have a lot of history in the town. And I think we need to start, in just showing, showcasing. We have, yeah, you know, we have, I can't use that word, doing a cap, but we have a Civil War cemetery that we're trying to get researched. The gentleman was, was a little repaired here. You know, I think that we need to start showing the history of the community. You know, it's important to have street lights, you know, blue lights, it's important to have the facade. But we also have a history that we need to, I think, the city needs to push forward and emphasize because usually, off the reef, they come down and out. And then you go on the path and you walk over to the cemetery and you read about the gentleman's burial there. Or you go, you know, you have the, Lake Mount Pleasant has the dove wing. We would have the railroad signal. You know, I just think it's something that gets the city a little bit more historic, sort of, you know. That's my speech.
What cemetery are you talking about?
What cemetery are you talking about? On, on Meganear Street?
Yeah, Meganear and Madison. Yeah.
I know, I know people who are related to the people who were buried there.
We've been trying to find out where the gentleman, there's a, the old, I have an old newspaper, and it shows the four Boy Scouts that have a plaque out there. So I'm, I'm, I've been trying to get, I've kind of been contacting one of the Boy Scouts, which is, he's a little older now, but just let me know where the cemetery, because it's done somewhere, but let me know what's there, and where we could put, like, a plaque, you know, commemorating this person. And this family, this was originally a farm, and it was a wildland farm.
Yeah.
And, you know, a little bit of history about them, and a little bit about the gentleman that, you know, you know, was in the Civil War. Just give some things for, you know, this, I don't know how many few are, who you're doing, but when I'm driving down the road and I see a placard, I have to stop and look and see what it says. Just because of, you know, and I think that's what people do, and that's what we want to have in the beginning here.
What we do about the property that it's on?
Oh, can be built, that's a cemetery. What's that?
Does it become tax exempt?
Probably is now, ready.
No?
Yeah, it is.
I forget.
It already is.
Seriously? Because the guy who owns just bought it. Said, I'm going to start a cemetery there. I think you can't bury people in the city.
No.
It's, okay, it's tax exempt.
Whatever it is right now is how it has to stay forever.
Okay. Because I just need to be able to work every day.
Somebody thought it.
Where you draw the house next to it?
That was right there. So we can figure out, you know, where the, where the, the location of, of the burial plots are now.
And Jerry, isn't there white fences or what? I'm trying to picture the plot.
That's beside, that's the right fence.
But it's near right now.
So is this the only option for what can go on there, or where this, did somebody suggest this?
This was suggested, and, and basically, based on the, it was a couple of different lanterns, but this was suggested because it was taller than the other ones that were squatted. And that was just a suggestion. It's, you know, you're, you're limited on what your choices are, but, you know, this seemed to be like the, the people I showed, they seemed to like that, but the house.
Oh, it's about a statue of arms, twelve foot point, yeah.
I mean, it's just a bunch, we can, we can, there's another idea, that's fine, I, I'd like to see, at some point, if I'm talking about the water problem, it would be nice to try to find grant money to repair the, the train station, to make that a site that people can sit there and watch trains, and have, like, placards with the history, history of, you know, the people went off to war, and different things, kind of explaining the little of the history of Latrobe. Again, just something to allow people to, you know, come in and see the community, and learn about the community, and, you know, stop then, have, you know, some lunch, or whatever, doesn't matter, you know. Anyway. Next on the hit parade is, the police are going to replace the K9 SUV with a pickup truck. A lot of, a lot of police departments are going with pickup trucks with K9 vehicles. It's easier to store the bomb and everything, so. And this is being paid out of K9 contributions, so it's not constantly sitting there.
Is there anything wrong with the SUV? Will you still be able to utilize that, or?
I think they're trading that, yeah.
They're trading it in to get a, suit the deal, and Mike has the numbers on the, on the truck.
Uh-huh, yeah.
But, uh, one of the other things too is to leave the DUI trailer, and the SUVs aren't rated to pull that trailer.
Right, okay.
So it's, it's important that we have, that it's properly rated on that.
And last one, and the last one, the hit parade is the, you know, we'll need to have a motion with the community authorized against comments, high for the 2019 CDB grant, the K9 project. And it's probably going to end up being Mary's, mostly Mary's, but, you know, it was put off the, taken off the table, this is because of the, the construction project not getting on as quickly as it should have, and say, thought it would be. But that, so that, we're about to do the street remodels.
It's, it's, uh, it's going to be.
It's, it's, I mean, it's, if you've been on it, there's not much of a right of life.
That's all I have. I'm going to ask, we can just come back for items either two. Could we suggest at this point, or perhaps we request the proposal from Mr. Ogul', I'd like to see what the numbers are, or whatever the services are he would provide. I mean, you said we could charge retainer for more. I'm not saying we have to accept it, just-